The reading of this and the enforcement of it are two different things. You will have to decide whether or not there will be any action taken if you feel like someone has violated during their comments. But I'll tell you right now, that's the danger zone. If you try to stifle that comment, that's where the danger zone would be. So if you take out the word strive and say, "We will uphold each citizen's First Amendment rights of free speech," that to me justifies it under the Constitution.
Thank you.
Mr. Higgin.
Yes, I have a few comments regarding this proposal. I'd like to start by, again, revisiting the First Amendment, which says, "Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press or the right of the people to peaceably assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances." The Supreme Court requires government to provide substantial justification for interfering with free speech where it attempts to regulate the content of the speech. And generally, a person cannot be held liable either criminally or civilly for anything written or spoken about a person or topic, so long as it is truthful or based on an honest opinion. I researched this at great length because I had a lot of interest in it, and I found a very applicable document online. It was a presentation made at the Texas City Attorneys Association's 2006 Summer Conference in the name of "The City Meetings of the First Amendment." And it's a nice report, you can look it up, Google it, but in a nutshell, the report says, "A speaker may not use their First Amendment right as authority to disrupt a council meeting." So somebody, the example they gave in the report, someone was giving a Nazi salute and screaming during the meeting, they were escorted out. But selective exclusion from a public forum may not be based on viewpoint alone. I'd like to read a selection from the report. It said, "If a municipality has created a designated forum on its agenda for public comment, with the limitation that comments are limited to subjects that address city and citizens' concerns, is a city allowed to prohibit the citizen from making a statement that, for instance, the mayor and council are liars and thieves on the premise this is a personal attack?" The report says, "If the citizen does not tie the name-calling to an issue concerning the city or citizens to the job performance or duties of the council, the answer may be yes. However, what if the speaker stated, 'Council members that support property tax rate hikes are liars and thieves because they promised, if elected, there would be no tax rate hikes.'" Arguably, this speech is protected because this statement is within the content permitted, and it is the speaker's view that by supporting tax rate increases, the governing body are liars and thieves, based on past campaign promises. So finally, I'd like to, I don't like reading anything, I don't think we've really had a problem significantly that would require reading anything. And the suggested wording proposed to be read before our public comment period is problematic because it states, "We ask that all speakers be respectful and refrain from defamation of character." But we don't define what defamation of character is. We don't say what it is, and perhaps it cannot be defined. Also, I have a problem with who is the arbiter of what is defamation. Presumably, it would be the presiding officer of our meeting, in this case, it would be Mayor Bailey, I presume. And while I trust Mayor Bailey to uphold the distinction between someone expressing their opinion regarding our performance to job expectations versus simply standing up here and name-calling, having such wording enshrined and read before all of our meetings in perpetuity could mean citizens are gagged and unable to express their opinions. We cannot and should not shut down our citizens from expressing their viewpoints, even if they suggest we're doing a poor job or ask that we resign. Everybody on this dais has been exposed to brutal criticism from time to time, including myself, but I think this is the price that we pay for being elected officials. And as our 33rd president liked to say, "If you can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen." We were elected, and we're going to be criticized from time to time, and I think that's part of the responsibility of being an elected citizen. And that's my two cents worth. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Let me jump in for a minute.
Mr. Quirrie.
I don't think, I don't think this is trying to stifle anything that a citizen has to say, but I do think in the recent past, we have had citizens who treaded very closely on libel, as far as I'm concerned, when they're, when they take somebody to task and to say to one of us that, "You're making money because you're voting on this and doing that." I think they need to have a better understanding of what they're saying, or should have one, before they get up here and speak. I don't think any of us have a problem with somebody approaching us, or asking us, or telling us that we're doing wrong. That is a part of our job. But when you personally attack one of us for something that is truly not necessarily in our governing business up here on the dais, I think that's wrong. And I think we need to do something, I don't want to stifle the people, but I think people should be made aware that they should do their research before they get up here and accuse people of things. And just the fact that we're talking about it and it's been spoken tonight, that we're trying to stifle the citizens, I don't think we have ever, and I don't think this is stifling a citizen, but I think at times, things have gotten out of hand, and it needs to be called back in order, and I think that's our mayor's job to do that during that conversation, if it's necessary. Things don't need to get out of control, and that's just my two cents worth on it.
Mr. Mint.
We've had many, many discussions about this, and so I'm wondering if we would consider a little bit of an edit to it where we leave off the last sentence of that first paragraph. I think as many municipalities in our state and our country that do give guidance to public comments, I don't feel it's all about stifling anybody, but it is just that, is to give some guidance. There have been so many times, people have come to me and said, "You know, I'd really like to sign up for public comments, but I don't know what to do." And we have never given any direction, so I think just stating, "Sign up, come forward, state your name and address, you're going to have four minutes," we usually don't respond, "Just direct your comments to the board," that is purely giving guidance. But that first sentence of saying that, "We're going to strive to uphold each citizen's First Amendment right to free speech and ensure a level of warum and decorum in the meeting," as Mayor Bailey said earlier, that's about everyone in this room, including those of us on the dais. So I don't know if that would make this any better for people if we left off with this in mind, "We ask that all speakers be respectful and refrain from defamation of character." That really should be without saying, and maybe we deal with that if it comes up.
Mr. Buckland.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to tread waters that I've never treaded before. Someone who comes in and speaks, if they do a libel through a comment made that was false, knowing it to be false, which is the Sullivan case, that is potentially a libel or slander, or in this case, a slander, unless they were reading from a statement, it would be a libel. But there's a remediate law if someone is defamed. So if some individual commissioner has been defamed, that commissioner would have a remediate law to bring an action for slander and libel against whomever uttered those words. The First Amendment should not be involved one iota with that. The First Amendment gives that person the right to express whatever they want to express. So I don't think that we need to go into this with an idea that we want to keep someone from saying something they shouldn't say, knowing it to be false, because if it is false and it is slander, then the commissioner has a remediate law at that point for libel and slander. Our Constitution doesn't need to be in any way restricted, particularly where it shouldn't be restricted, where the person who is a victim has a remediate law to be able to seek a redress his or herself in that situation. So I don't think there should be any reference whatsoever to a defamation of character or in that respect.
Mr. Milton.
Thank you, Mayor. While I think there have been times where individuals have approached and addressed us rather in person or what other means of communication solely for the purpose of being insightful and pot-stirring, if you will, that's their God-given, unalienable right. I made the statement during the mini-planning conference that just because you don't like something, that doesn't make it wrong. And I think the fact that just because we don't like something, it doesn't make it This is, in my uneducated opinion, a topic that we're not going to solve tonight, and we shouldn't solve it tonight, we shouldn't try to solve it tonight. I think it affects 33,000 people plus in this city, and I think it deserves a little bit more, as Commissioner Urban quite often says, a little deeper dive, to make sure that, we often talk about making hundred-year decisions, 50-year decisions, this may be a multi-generational decision, and I don't want to rush to judgment and do the wrong thing.
Mr. Urban.
I've stayed very quiet through this entire debate because obviously I've been the focus of a series of attacks, and I guess I could weigh that libel slander discussion with the mayor, with the town attorney, is that aspect. My point is, kind of on Mr. Higgin's point, I don't need, I don't need any of this, because the bottom line is, if a person wants to get up out there and say something about me or what have you, I know between my God and myself, I'm straight, and I think most of the people in the room know me, so do 30,000 other citizens of this town, that whoever is sitting there says something that is not in line with my personality and my kindness and generosity and commitment to this town, is going to know that person may not be all right. And so I would rather have them get up there, and if you want to say, "Make a fool of themselves" or "Do whatever you want to do," that's fine, then that's, they're right. But I don't, I don't need this to protect anybody. I don't think anybody thinks this is a protection aspect of it, I don't mind if it's written down and it's out there, and people read it and get an understanding of it. I would hope everybody would act civilly, in a proper discord, but few individuals, they get off topic, and it's sad for them. But I'm, I don't need to have this because I know where I stand, and I'm comfortable with it. Thank you.
Let me make just one comment and really go back to the beginning of how we got here. This whole thing occurred in the beginning because an individual in this town came to the podium and, in my view, disparaged several of the commissioners. And that's their, their right to do that, and I don't have a problem with that. But if you're going to come up and stand at this podium and say something and tear down a commissioner, an elected official, you should expect that that elected official is going to exercise their First Amendment right to set the record straight in their mind. When that citizen who came in and spoke found out that this commissioner exercised his First Amendment right, that citizen decided that that wasn't appropriate for that commissioner to exercise his First Amendment right, and beyond that, wanted censure added to the board's ethics, that the individual might be censored. I think that this whole thing grew out of a, an issue associated with an individual who did not like what a board member said at the end of a meeting in response to the critical comments that citizen made. And I think that this thing has completely blown up. Nobody has or will infringe upon First Amendment rights. I don't think we've ever had a meeting where, that I can remember in 18 years, where the gavel had to be used to control a crowd. I don't remember anybody ever being escorted out of a room, this room or our old room. And I think that, you know, what this is, the statement is trying to say is, "Let's be nice to each other, let's be respectful to each other." You know, come up and talk to us, we're people just like you are. We're all citizens, just like you are. We pay taxes, we raise taxes, we pay taxes. Our taxes get raised, too. It's not like we're sitting up here as some, you know, special folks that don't have to pay taxes. We don't have to run over the potholes, you know? We get to sit up front in the park, that's not the case. We're here just like any of y'all are. And I think that, you know, what we've had in the past in this town is a very cooperative, genteel discussion about things. We've been polite to each other, and there are individuals coming into this town who were not that way, and that's not Matthews. And I do not want to see us going down a road of disparaging political comments that really, in the end, when the news is called and people stand up here, it makes us look like fools, in my opinion. You know, it really does. We hear good, constructive comments from people, and I think that's important. But I'm worried about this town, its branding, what people think of Matthews. I worry about the people who are here and their ability to speak openly and publicly. But my comment is, if you're going to come up here and start throwing water balloons, you can expect water balloons to come back at you. And don't think that, you know, the people up here don't have freedom of speech. We have freedom of speech, too, just like anybody else in this town. So I'd like to ask that we think about this a while and take a look at it and get comments back to Becky.
I'd like to.
Mr. Quirrie.
People talk about term limits and how long people should serve and what they should do, and I reckon I'm one of those people sitting up here that some people would say, "Term limits should have been imposed, and I shouldn't be here." I've been associated with this board as mayor or commissioner for 30 years, starting back in 1969. We have, during that time, only in the last year have we had people come before us and berate a commissioner, and which I thought was unreal and not correct to be done in public. I'm hoping that through all this, the citizens will learn that they need to be sure of their facts, they need to be accurate, because I think if not, I think you're right, Paul, we have the right to retaliate to or respond. And the main thing, it came about out of here, and it was mentioned tonight, and the person can say whatever they want to do, but this came out of some, a citizen coming up here and asking, "Why don't y'all put in censorship of the commissioners?" I don't think there's a one of us up here that wants to censor another commissioner, but that's what was brought before us, and I thought that was wrong. I think you're right, we can think about this for a while and we could see, but I believe our town is better than what we've seen in the last little while. It doesn't need to get dirty. I mean, you can state your facts, you don't have to say things that are not necessarily truthful. So I would, I would agree with you, let's think about it for a while, and let's do it. And over 30 years, we haven't needed this, and Paul, you and I have served for a lot of years together, and that's the first time I've seen that happen. And we need our citizens to step back, and there's no reason one citizen can't tell another citizen, "You know, you're going a little bit too far." And I think, I think the public will see that. I do appreciate the folks here that said they liked the job we're doing. Everybody up here is trying to do the best job they can for this town. I don't think there's anything hidden, I don't think there's anybody trying to make money on the side. If that was the case, we sure in the wrong business to make money. So anyhow, I agree with you, Paul, I just wanted to kind of get my two cents worth out there, that I, this is all has kind of come together from that, that meeting and a citizen asking us to start censorship, which I don't think is correct either. Thank you.
Mr. Higgin.
As a final comment, I just think anything that we read that would scare people from speaking their mind is not healthy in a democracy. And telling people that they have to refrain from defamation of character and it's arbitrary what defamation of character is, is just not, it's not healthy. It's going to squelch public dialogue, and we need people that are upset to come up here and tell us why they're upset, and we can't be afraid by what they're going to say. And I totally agree, if they say something out of line, we can certainly respond, but to not allow them to speak or to read something like this that scares people because they're afraid they're going to be arrested or publicly humiliated if they say something to express a, an opinion that they don't agree with us is, is not good.
I'll agree that, about the chilling effect of the words.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but we're not, again, we're not trying to keep anybody from saying what they think, including ourselves. Okay? So we will get comments back to Becky and have this on a future agenda if needed. Okay, the next item is 11A, "Consider the Grant for Matthews Traffic Modeling," and I'll call Dana back up.
So I wanted to bring forward, this is the State Planning and Research Grant that some of you spoke of earlier this evening. This is a grant that will allow us to do some sub-area modeling for the town of Matthews, which will hopefully answer a lot of the questions that have been brought to our attention in recent months, looking to see whether we could change or delete certain projects on the transportation network through NCDOT. This will also allow us to take a deep dive in understanding our land use and how land use impacts basically traffic on our network. The beauty of this potential project is that modeling is done by Charlotte Department of Transportation, and they can run this model as much as we need them at no cost. It's through the MPO funds that they do this, and they would do this for us as well. So I know we've talked about this before in small groups, but if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. This is a, again, this is an 80/20 match, this is like, this is a bit of a, not a, it's an unusual grant to apply for, it's just not something that our region applies for much, but it is through NCDOT, and this is a, I think, a very good use of this money. It is a competitive process, we won't know until the end of this month whether we are successful.
Mr. Higgin.
Yes, this is, my previous comments more appropriate for this grant right here, because this does address, you know, a lot of modeling and things, and gives us more data to, to, again, not make decisions based on emotions, but will actually have data. So I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to pursue the SPR grant for transportation small area plan and modeling with a local match of $40,000.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Urban. Mr. Milton.
Thank you, Mayor, I like this, I support it, I'll vote for it because, to echo Commissioner or, pardon me, Mayor Pro-Tim Higgin's statement, we can't keep going to Scott and his department and say, "You're wrong." And he says, "Why? Well, because we said you're wrong, and you're wrong." Having this data to back up our stance is critical, and nice job, Dana. Thank you for your hard work identifying these past couple opportunities, this is really great.
Thank you.
Mr. Urban.
Dana, you have broken through the frozen, cold-hearted, no-study commissioner of the town of Matthews.
I voted for this many since I've talked about it.
Exactly right.
Those were tonight.
You've done an excellent job from that standpoint, I definitely support it, again, because of the dollar ratio, it works real well. And I tell you, I like, if you're tools, I love tools in my tool chest, all different types of tools, and the more you have, the more things you can do, and this is just another tool to add to our arsenal, and it's great because we can, to Commissioner Milton's point, we can push back now beyond the emotional aspect of things, and it's sort of like, here's the data, same with the parking analysis, here's the data. And it sort of rules that emotional side of things out, and it really goes to the heart of the matter of having more tools in the toolbox and more things to have, so I really support this tremendously, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? All right, we have a motion on the floor to direct staff to pursue this grant. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Okay, next item, 11B, is purchase, "Consider Purchase of Safety Equipment for Use at Town Events." Stacey, there you are.
Clark, Clark, you've changed.
Yeah. We spend all our money.
That's right. That's right.
And Chief Pennington does send his regrets for not being able to be here, he's at the North Carolina Chiefs of Police Conference, and the distance prohibited him from being able to travel back for tonight's meeting, so he did want to be here to present this on himself, but I'm happy to, happy to pass any information I can along, some background, how we got here, whatever you deem necessary. Yes, I apologize, I didn't submit the documents here, but I can tell you that as far as what we're looking to do, several years ago, the North Carolina Department of Transportation, we identified some solar-powered trailers that have cameras on them that we use for our larger events, most specifically Beach Fest and Matthews Alive, and those were decommissioned units when we received them. DOT had already rendered them kind of old and outdated for their use, but they were still working, so we've used them for the last several years to help with crowd management and surveillance of large crowd areas, and it's proven to be an excellent force multiplier for us to have that elevated view and be able to help look for lost children or recognize hotspots and problem areas and crowd control issues. So we've kind of built our operations plan for the safety and security of the event based on our surveillance trailers. Through this last Matthews Alive, we, through the last couple events we've used them, we've incurred problem after problem, keeping them operational. This last Matthews Alive, we were down to just one camera, and as we researched and found, it's just outdated equipment, and it's no longer going to be useful to us. So we started looking at what our possibilities were and how we could obtain brand-new equipment that would be up-to-date, state-of-the-art type of camera surveillance, as well as the ability to do notifications through digital messaging boards. Right now, we've been borrowing message boards, we were able to borrow two from Union County, one from their emergency management, and one from the Union County Sheriff's Office. They've been great, very gracious over the last few years to allow us to use these message boards, and again, they've become part of our operations plan and somewhat vital to our ability to work within street closure. And those, you know, were always dependent, and they've been, like I said, they've been gracious, and we've appreciated it very much, but it would be much more effective and we would have a lot more use throughout the year for numerous events that we hold within the town if we had our own digital message boards. And the, and then we looked at the option of being able to put in the speed component to it as a way to slow traffic and let them know they're approaching a closed road, and we can use that, that opportunity to, you know, flash, reduce speed. The signs have red and blue lights that flash on them to grab people's attention and kind of, you know, "Hey, you're going way too fast, you're entering this area," where we've got closed roads or highly congested pedestrians, 5K runners, we've got, the town's just wonderful in how many events we have, but it's very crowded, it's very condensed, a lot of traffic, so we're always concerned with that as well.
Are there any questions for Captain Taro? For Mr. Milton.
Stacey, I got just a couple of questions.
Stacey, I got, uh, just a, a couple of questions and I think I know the answer. Um, you made use out of some equipment that should've been shelved and recycled years before we got it and hats off to you for that. But the purchase of this equipment, how long is it good for? I- i- is this gonna be a five-year purchase, a ten-year purchase? We both know how technology evolves and things are end of life.
Yeah, I, I would, technology's not my area of expertise by any means. Um, this is, uh, you know, pan tilt zoom, high-definition, uh, top-of-the-line equipment. I've researched it. I've done multiple, um, looked at multiple different, different vendors, what they have to offer. All I can tell you is that this is industry standard, what they're, what they're doing right now. I can't, it, it's hard for me to predict where, where we'll be in technology in, in five to ten years, but I, I feel very confident that we're five-plus years, if not longer, um, using these. I mean, we got three or four years out of the old stuff and that's, you know...
Uh, as a follow-up question, there's, under vendor, the ECAM secure?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Is that for somebody to come out, configure, set up?
It is.
Program test?
Yeah, including, uh, yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna come out here, they're gonna set it all up and they're also gonna train, uh, us, um, exactly how everything works and how to, how to use the net, because we'll have two different systems. We'll have a ubiquity antenna and we'll also have cellular data. Um, the ubiquity's more of a backup system. If the cellular should, we've experienced problems, um, because when you're in a loud crowd situation and bandwidth gets narrowed by the amount of users in the area, we've got a backup system. So, um, this is really exciting for us to be able to know that we've got a lot of things in place. Um, that's, again, what the industry standard is for top technology right now in crowd management and surveillance.
Cool. Thank you.
Mr. Man.
Yeah, um, gonna use John Urban's, um, phrase earlier. To me, this is just some tools in a toolbox that a town of this size and, and the things that our police officer, officers are having to face right now that we definitely need instead of having to depend on someone else's generosity and borrowing it. What if they have a big event at the same time we do and then we can't borrow it? Um, we're seeing some things happen in this town and not directly maybe related to this, but that we've never seen before. And I think we need to, we're probably very fortunate that they have done as well as they've had with borrowing equipment and not having equipment. So, I'd like for us to see if we can supply our, our MPD with whatever tools they may need to take care of the thirty-two thousand-plus people that we have. And as big as these events are getting, um, Matthews Alive, Beach Fest, they're getting bigger every year and we need to do what we can to be as proactive as we can to help. So, if we can make a motion tonight, I'd like to, to do that.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would. Approve the allocation of the tourism funds to purchase the message and the surveillance trailers for use during our large-town events and other public safety-related needs.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion, a second. We'll, we'll give the tie to Mr. Query. All right, any discussion on that motion?
No.
Okay. All those in favor?
That's right.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so we do have a second motion for the budget amendment to do this. Um, it's in the memo. It's up there now.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve a budget amendment as prepared by Chief of Police for purchase of two Instalert Display Trailers, uh, two Speed Alert, four Radar message boards and two Surveillance Unit custom trailer configurations, uh, per the outline memo dated January of two thousand and nineteen by Chief Clark Pennington.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Stacey. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is consider an ordinance to disallow the discharge of firearms, which includes bow and arrows in the town of Matthews. And, Stacey, are you gonna address that as well or the manager?
I will do my best to answer any questions if you have them. I, I did not, I didn't prepare any of this part of it. Um, it's outside the scope of my normal.
Mr. Buckley, would you like to...
Mr. Mayor, real quickly, all this does, you have an ordinance now that prohibits the discharge of firearms, including the bow and arrow, unless they have a permit from the town board. And at that point, your permit can be granted or not granted based on the safety of the situation. Well, based on your prior conversations, what we've done is just simply deleted the portion of the ordinance that, that allows a permit to be granted so that, in effect, the ordinance is not changed except to disallow the permit application process. So, then it's all unlawful to discharge, period.
Okay. Mr. Milton?
Mayor, this is something that I encouraged for a couple of planning conferences and I'm glad to see us, uh, considering this and I'm going to, in a minute, make a motion to move forward with this, but I wanted to make for the record that, uh, it, it in no way shows my support for any gun control or gun control legislation. I'm a, a proud gun owner. Um, I'm currently on restriction from, uh, acquiring anymore, but I would like to make a motion that we, um, revise our town ordinance as listed in our agenda packet, uh, on today's date, that we no longer allow discharge of firearms in town limits.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Mr. Higdon.
Stacey, are you aware of anybody that has a, a practice, uh, target range in their, on their property that...
No, because I...
Most, most all of this was done for the purposes, let's be honest, for hunting.
Correct. Correct. We, we issued those temporary permits, um, only during the hunting season.
So, it was...
I believe they can, uh, they could apply for target practice for bow and arrow. I, I think that's possible. I'm just, I, I've never been part of that process.
Would this disallow the...
That would.
This allows any discharge of firearms.
I, I know the majority of requests are, are during hunting season.
I'm, I'm just wondering if we have some unintended consequences that some folks are just target practicing very safely and we're gonna disallow that?
But they should've applied for a discharge permit.
They never did. They were never caught. Still won't be.
Mr. Query?
Uh, I, I understand the reasoning behind, uh, wanting to disallow the firearms, that, that we have a lot of citizens who are concerned about that. And, and I do at times, but I think we've been very cautious in when we have allowed that. Uh, I will support the motion, but, uh, a question I've got is, and I don't know enough about it, probably maybe you do know, Stacey, is I think Stallings have a period of time that they allow people to, uh, hunt deer, to bring the number of them down to where they control their auto accidents. Do you know, are you familiar with...
I'm, I'm not familiar with that now. I've not heard about that.
Uh, that's, that, what I'm getting to is how are we gonna control the deer population? Uh, I don't know that what we're granting has controlled anything. I mean, the number of deer they would get, those few people would get, but we need, we need to be proactive and figure out what we're gonna do to try to, uh, help that situation because I see more and more, each year I see more deer laying on the side of the road and, uh, you can figure, there's a lot of damage done to the car, uh, when they hit, hit one of those things. And, uh, just, I'd like to open it up a little bit further. This I would like to approve. I think that's what the public wants, but I would like for somebody to take the action to find out what we could do to control it. And a few years ago, we had someone in here from, uh...
Wildlife Commission.
It's through the Wildlife Commission.
They have jurisdiction, yes.
Yeah.
So, maybe we should ask them to come give us a report on what options are.
That's an option. If you go on their website...
Yeah.
There is a program that they have that will allow, uh, the reduction of the population of deer. But I would imagine with this being done, I mean, that would be a separate process in and of itself. We'd have to go through a...
Well, we wouldn't have to do anything because now there'd be disallowed any discharge in, in the town, period.
Right. So, I mean, we would have to, we would have to do some ordinance changes in order to allow it even for a...
Correct.
A period of time.
Correct.
But again, this is discharge of weapons, not, not hunting. Mr. Higdon?
Just like to make a comment in support of Commissioner Query. I'm, I'm not a wildlife expert, but my daughter is. She's gonna get her master's degree in wildlife biology in a few months and she, when, when folks would stand up here and say, "We're controlling the population by, uh, you know, having six discharge permits per year," it's really laughable by someone that knows about deer and we weren't, we weren't even remotely, um, doing anything to the deer population. So, I agree with Commissioner Query. At some point, uh, we may need to have a study or something and have folks come in here because I...
Study, studies.
Yeah, I studied.
Study. Would you go to Revival?
A free study.
I made the comment to Commissioner Miller that I know some boys from Pageville that'll come up here and kill all our deer in one day. That's the desire, but, no, I, I, we have a lot of deer, as, as I'm sure many of us are aware. I live along Four Mile Creek and I see herds of deer pass through my yard daily, so we have a lot of deer here, but I will support this motion.
Any other comments? Okay. We have a motion on the floor to, to move forward with, uh, this change of the ordinance. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is consider approval of tourism grants in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars for lacrosse showcase. Mr. Manager? Or is Cory here? There he is. I didn't see Cory.
Cory's gonna take the lead.
You're gonna tag me in?
So, yeah, we're tag teaming. So, um, the folks that own the, the lacrosse team and the, uh, soccer team are the same people. And the, they came to talk to the mayor and I about soccer and kind of their plans and how long they're gonna be out there at the sportsplex. And out of that conversation, the question was raised, they wanna do a, uh, what they're calling the Crown Lacrosse Classic. Oh, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh, Crown Lacrosse Classic. Sorry, Mayor. Lori. Do you want me to start all over?
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. So, um, so in, in the, in the memo, it's, it, those are very good, those teams up there are among the best lacrosse teams in the country and they wanna do this on March, uh, eighth and ninth. They want, this is gonna be the first year and they wanna grow this into something bigger. I think this, these are the kind of things that do bring people to our community, give us a lot of exposure. You know, when they first mention this, in my mind, I wonder, "Well, how much are they gonna ask for?" You know? But, um, it's just gonna be, it's gonna be that four-day or that, that round robin with those four college teams and then it's a clinic. So, it's not a tournament this first year, but they wanna grow it into a major event. Uh, we talked about it. This is outside the cycle, right? But to tell them, "Look, come back in, whatever, July," didn't make sense and luckily it wasn't a big dollar, so staff is recommending to, uh, approve the, these funds out of the tourism funds for, for this event.
Mr. Higdon?
Do we know specifically what they're spending the money on?
Um, the information, uh, I guess we can gather that they're gonna spend it toward marketing for the event.
I'm sorry, marketing?
Marketing, yes.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you. I think this is a wonderful beginning to another, uh, annual event, uh, bringing heads in beds and people to come visit the downtown. And we all know we have a healthy food and beverage, uh, tourism tax that comes in when they do spend money in hotels and restaurants. So, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the grant funding request from Queen City Sports in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars to support the Crown Lacrosse Classic.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any other comments? Questions? Okay, seen them? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That was pretty painless. Oh, okay, we have to, okay. Mr. Miller, we do have to appropriate the dollars under the budget ordinance. Would you like to make that motion as well?
I will as soon as I just clicked out of it.
I'm not sure it's in the memo.
There's no script, so don't get your hopes up.
Uh, also, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the budget for the town of Matthews to increase two thousand five hundred, the appropriation, uh, for the lacrosse showcase.
And I'll second that one, too.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
And it's reasonable and consistent.
Okay, 11E, proposed topics for the 2019 Planning Conference.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, in your packet are, uh, topics for the proposed planning conference, uh, that came out of the mini-conference discussion. Um, some of these are relatively straightforward, kinda show a greenway plan, uh, that identifies gaps with cost estimates. Um, Ooten Pottery, that is an example of a park that's kind of been lingering and the tourism fund is very healthy. Uh, McKee Road Pleasant Plains, that's twenty-seven acres that you guys accepted tonight. As part of that zoning petition was a million dollars to go with that. Um, we're asking, uh, Parks and Rec to come back with a conceptual plan. I know we'll go through a process, but at least it'll give us a start for something for the board to look at. Second area is infrastructure. Somebody talked about lack of sidewalks and like, where are the gaps in those sidewalks? Uh, review the paving program. The comment was made, subdivision streets are starting to deteriorate. Uh, crosswalks along Highway fifty-one, uh, in, in my mind at least, that's kind of my note, needs more explanation. What I wrote down was adding cross, uh, crosswalks all around town, not just fifty-one, especially where intersections are or will be widened. And then I think, Mayor, you made a comment or added a comment, "What about a pet flyover over fifty-one?"
Right.
So, I guess the takeaway would be, it sounds like the board is interested in kind of what are these connections like to get people across streets in a safe manner? Um, so, if anybody, yes?
A pet flyover, over John Street wouldn't hurt either, honestly.
I think there's a lot of opportunities for that, but, you know, they...
Maybe a vine.
Cost a lot of money and...
All right, uh, number four there is the cost to build, uh, the, park, build parking on the old, what we're calling the old post office property. It's behind, uh, Domenico's or what's now the, uh, Lebanese restaurant.
Kebab, kebab, something kebab.
Pita kebab, thank you very much. That is owned by the town. Y'all asked us to extend that to John Street because we own that property and also lighting. Uh, a new one here is quiet zones for trains. Uh, yes, sir.
May I interject on that? Can we add to that? I had, for some reason, coincidentally, two citizens pulled me aside this weekend and say that, that there, there's a conductor who's bitter that he's working third shift and when he comes through town and wants everybody to be awake with him. Can, can we add to that to consider, to, to increase this quiet zone between certain hours, between certain streets?
Uh, that's a good question.
Yeah, it's, it, the complaint was, "It's like the conductor on the trains angry because he's up and he wants everybody else to be up."
So, the, uh, the, the work there is at the street intersection and they have to be, a real structure has to be built to literally prevent somebody like a, you know, car or whatever kinda sneaking through. I, as I understand that those are expensive, but we, we can give you numbers. I, I think the question would be, can you extend that quiet zone all the way down, let's say to Crestdale or close to Crestdale and then the other direction? So, so that may give you the relief you're talking about.
Thank you.
Okay.
And, and I think just to add to this, this is a comment coming from multiple developers about properties we've talked about that they want to develop, but because they're beside the train tracks, they can't. So, this isn't necessarily a cost for the town. We'd want CSX to take care of this. It could be. We'll, we'll argue that point with them when we get there.
Yeah, well...
But, uh, but anyway, just some background of where that came from.
Or maybe the developer could do it.
Where the developer could do it, yeah.
So, uh, the, under the planning stuff is identify properties in town that are currently zoned by right that need to be rezoned. I think we've touched on this at the planning conference. Uh, the expectations for the entertainment district, the way I, it's said to illustrate it visually. So we have these words, right? Well, what does that mean? How does that look if you're a citizen or a board member? So that's, that's what we plan on, Commissioner Higgin, and I think you were the one that brought that up. I wanna make sure we're kinda going in the direction you envisioned. All right. So grow green space, have APA, which is the American Planning Association, or Urban Land Institute advise the town. Commissioner Urban, I think you brought this up about identifying more green space downtown and having like experts coming from outside the area.
I mean, they would, they would blend that with built environment and green space, but those two associations, that's their wheelhouse. They could come in and, and provide that kind of experience, you know, level of experience to talk about those issues.
All right, so I could, what we'll probably end up doing is bringing you back, like here's what if we brought ULI in, here's how much it costs. So it's really that interplay between green space and the built, the built environment. That's right.
And there may be sources because we're probably, isn't the town a member of the EPA? I mean, there may be some free resources or something like that.
Yeah, and they've come in before. They helped us with Crestdale five years ago or so, so. Uh, one, one comment was made, home builders, no more homes until you come to the table to help offset the school overcrowding issue. That's a big nut. I mean, that, 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 I think that's, uh, impact fees that I think one of y'all shared some information. South Carolina has and I guess, um, Fort Mill's doing some of that. So, uh, number five there is lack of meeting space in town. We need a full-service hotel. That may be, you know, outside the current staff's like expertise of, you know, we can certainly get the word out of recruiting someone at full-service hotel. And in talking to some folks, it's really, apparently the industry's going away from full-service hotels. That people want, you know, they want a free breakfast, they want a cheap room, so. I'm, uh, certainly not advocating that the town own a hotel, but I, it was interesting when CIAA left Charlotte, they went to Baltimore and they said one of the driving forces was that Baltimore owns several large hotels, including a Hilton, and they can control the cost. The town, the town of Baltimore actually owns the hotels. It's kind of interesting. They couldn't get any built, so they, they built them themselves. Doesn't have any windows, but.
Look what an aquarium will do for you.
Uh, finance, uh, we're, are we, Becky, are we rebranding this to the comprehensive CIP instead of the super CIP? Yeah, super CIP sounded like insurmountable. Comprehensive CIP, capital improvements plan. We added, uh, West Charles, Ames and, and Lower Streets as examples. We wanna see what would it take to improve those. Uh, the police department has been working on a workload analysis. Uh, we wanna get a report on that to you guys. This one, you guys may say, do we really need this? But like big picture, like brainstorm, the big what's next in Matthews? I mean, you know, this development was a big thing. The, uh, sportsplex is a big thing. I mean, you know, you, the community center was a big thing. So we do have a track record of doing great things. Is there something else that y'all would like to see, uh, that the community do or the board do?
Could I interject something here? Um, Jay, when you organ, I think it was you that organized the trip to Rock Hill. And to me, that gave a lot of great conversation and great talk on us on the bus trip about, you know, the, the big what's next. So I don't know if you're thinking about any other field trips or road trips, but that was, that gave some great inspiration, I think.
Well, I think we all have low.
I don't have any limits on that, so I'll let the other people, um, boulder.
Yeah, and I, I'll echo that. I mean, how many times have we been to Rock Hill in our lives? But that was just so insightful. It was, it was very nice.
I think we were all a little skeptical, to tell you the truth, until we actually saw what, what you had to show us.
Skeptical?
Skeptical. Yeah.
I was the biggest skeptic probably.
Yeah. Well, I was too, quietly. Um, under communications, like development plan, development plan with cost, to begin live streaming town board meetings, we think that's an important concept. And also, uh, free broadband, free wifi downtown, is that something we need to do or should do? Uh, well, that, yeah, there's, now, some, some cities in North Carolina like Wilson have cable, right? As, as their, that's their business model. Mooresville, Davidson.
Morganton.
Yeah, and I think there was an item that, that Lori sent us today, a part of the, the League of Municipalities discussion, is focusing on wired connected, or wireless connected towns. That, that's the roundtable discussion this year.
Yeah, okay, that's good. Um, so kind of other concepts, lobbyists, is it time to hire someone? That was one.
No.
Well, we don't, we don't have to spend time on it. And I would say the last time we did that was the Ferguson Group at the federal level. And it was when earmarks were around. And as I understand it, I'm looking for Maureen, she's got the most federal experience in the room, I think. More earmarks are a thing of the past. Yes, they are, okay. So, so there's limited, I think there probably is limited value in a lobbyist at this point. But that's something that came out of the discussion for your terms, you know? We, we're happy to talk about that again, but, okay, I, I'm gonna interpret silence means consent, if that's fair.
Can I qualify something real quick?
Sure.
These are, and, and this is for people in the room who haven't been part of the, these discussions before and, and those on the board. To, these aren't items that we're considering, to the mayor's point a few minutes ago. These are items that someone on staff or on the board felt relevant to at least sit down and talk about. These are just, just conversations. These aren't necessarily items that are up for consideration.
Okay, good point. Um, number three there is consider inviting charter schools to locate the town. This probably should be worded a little different, town to consider an in-kind contribution. I think the concept there is that there is companies out there that are in this business or have this business model. And the question would be to bring somebody like that in to talk to the board about, well, here's what my company does related to charter schools.
Is there any, oh, I'm sorry, John?
I don't think there's any way we're gonna get to all these topics during our planning conference. Or we're gonna short, we're gonna not do some of these conversations justice by making them shorter than they need to be. I, I'd like to see us prioritize this. I think we need to cut this in about half.
This isn't that big of a list.
This is a big list. I could see the charter school conversation taking three or four hours. I mean, the, uh.
Y'all might talk about it for three, four hours.
I may be wrong, but I mean, we're gonna have to cut, we're gonna have to put strict time limits on these things in because a lot of these conversations could easily go three or four hours each.
It's a very good point. The interesting, also the interesting point is we don't have the drive time. Like in the past, I mean, we're all pretty worn out on Sunday, but you're driving 10 minutes, you're not driving three hours. If, if we wanted to go to, let's say, three o'clock on Sunday. But just remember, we turn around the next day and we have a board meeting.
Well, is there any desire to prioritize the list anyway in case we don't get to all of them? Are there some that are more important than others?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
So maybe one of the takeaways would be the board, to, or do you guys wanna give us feedback on? It is dangerous when staff, I think, prioritizes.
Maybe everybody pick their top six or seven or five or whatever, that they really like to talk, and then just see what, we, we get the most votes and then we'll make sure we talk about those because we, we may, I'm, you know, I may be wrong. Maybe we'll get through all of it, but I don't. Some of these look like they're gonna be pretty lengthy conversations.
Some of these may also be assignments, though, John, because, for example, Mike's, um, Jeff, you come over and turn this on.
It's some of these things like the APA or ULI coming and doing a presentation, that could be some other point in time.
Right. And I can see us getting costs and saying, here's what they can do.
Right, the charter school aspect of it, throw it to Jeff and Jeff lines it up and brings it back through his advisory board. So there may be some things there as well. So maybe some of these things we could peel off unrelated to the planning conference. And then we, we talked about it last year, we did the same thing. We had time limits on certain things and we tried to cut it off and move on to the next.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, either that or put time limits on it and, and make it fit.
And I'm sorry, but if we do prepare, staff prepares it and we don't get to it, we can just bring it up at another meeting. So it's not, it's not, it's not the end of the world. I mean, the preparation is there, so the groundwork's done.
Well, typically, when you do these things, I mean, the time, say, this is a 20-minute discussion.
Yeah, if we do that, we'll get there.
Then I'll be the timekeeper and we get to 20 minutes, we wrap it up. You know, if it's that much conversation, then it warrants a, a, another discussion to get into the issue deeper.
So, uh, Becky and I talked about another one this morning. I, I, and it's kind of an example of an interesting one. I don't think it's a big time consumer, but the free medical clinic, their lease runs out in 2023. And according to state law, they are locked in, when they're renting town-owned property, they're locked into a 10-year lease. What you do then do after that, you go out, actually, I, I would call it Charlie, upset bid process, right? And.
For them to stay, yeah.
That's right, for them to stay. But then they, in theory, could be competing against a realtor or somebody that's willing to spend a whole bunch more money on rent than, than the free medical clinic is. One of the things we could do, if the board wanted to do, we could seek special legislation to get exempt because we did get this special legislation for the chamber building.
We got a 99-year, up to 99 years with the chamber.
Right, so, so that makes an example of an item that's interesting. I think Becky's point is, why wait to 2022 to start scrambling? Let's have a discussion about it now. Sometimes getting stuff through the general assembly can take two terms, too. So there's, there's another suggestion.
So I think coming away from this, what we're hearing is we'll do some prioritization and then we'd ask the staff put some time, uh, periods on each one of these for discussion so we can, uh, stay within our, our, uh, three days.
Can we exempt, sorry, Mayor?
Mr. Miller?
If I can make a suggestion to do it similar to the advisory boards, if Lori can copy and paste the list to a Word document and then we, uh, re, resort it to our prioritization. Cop, you know, just copy and paste it to the, you know, it's in the order it is now and then we, we reprioritize it.
Anyways, whatever's the pleasure of the board is.
I, I think that's easy.
And before we send out, Lori, I got a few little notes here. I got a few little notes going on. Mayor, if may.
Yes, Mr. Miller, sorry.
Can we exempt Chief Pennington's workload analysis review from the prioritization and timeframe? I think that should be, uh, in, in, in my head, that's priority one. I, I don't wanna choke that discussion or put him under, pardon, under time analysis, time crunch to not be able to get out what he needs to get out.
But why isn't that just at 5:30?
That's what it should be.
Yeah.
That's what I think.
Because I really see, to your point, we're not taking action on these things. This is high-level discussions. Get it all out there, vet it, good, bad, and different. That really is more of a decision-making process there, that workload analysis.
So let's go ahead and pull that off, make it a 5:30.
That way, we're focused just on it and you'll probably come away with an action item. A lot of these things, we may not come away with an action item. It may be like, eh, okay.
Good point.
Or you can say, let's do that, then you get to the budget.
That may be something we can do. Meeting on the 25th.
Are we starting the planning conference on Thursday or Friday?
Planning conference proposing a Thursday, I mean, excuse me, Friday to Sunday. And I, it, you know, I think about it, in some ways, we do have three full days. Now, that, that is.
You're proposing all day Friday?
Um, right now, yeah. We can start at, you know, it's the will of the board. If it, y'all prefer to start at 12 o'clock on Friday, we can do that. Um, does anybody got any concerns if we start in the morning?
No, we just gotta, we'll work, let's go work.
Maybe, maybe, maybe get off earlier on Sunday or something like that.
And that would be February 22nd, 23rd, and 24th.
That's correct.
Did we start on Thursday in February last year?
We, we did last year. I don't think we need to this year.
Because we're staying in town.
That's right.
Yeah. We, last year, when we started on Thursday, we were meeting with staff, so they'll be available the whole time. Okay, anything else?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. Next item is mayor's report. Um, oh, everybody wake up. Now the lights are dimming and they'll go back up. There we go. Hey, that's pretty cool. Yeah.
Wow.
I attended the, uh, North Carolina Transportation Summit in Raleigh last week and, uh, it was extremely good, very beneficial to go, uh, if for no other reason to be able to meet our transportation board representatives. And, uh, I had an opportunity to talk to Scott Cole, uh, in a more, um, uh, informal setting. So I thought that, that some of the conversations I had were promising from a John Street perspective. Uh, the thing that was surprising to me is that they all knew about John Street. I mean, it's, everybody knows about John Street. So that's a, that's a plus in our direction. Um, I will say too that, uh, I don't think there's anybody up there that Dana doesn't know. She knew everybody, everybody knew her. It was amazing. She knew who to talk to and, and who was doing what. And it was just, uh, it was a pleasure being up there and, and seeing all this. Um, I did put something on Facebook about a project that's, uh, being done by Virgin Corporation. Uh, Richard Branson, I think is his name.
Yeah, I, I enjoyed your post.
Yeah, uh, from Charlotte to Raleigh in 22 minutes. And, uh, it's nothing much different than the technology we have for magnetic levitation, except their concept takes a tube and puts a vacuum on it, so there's no air resistance. They think they can get up over 600 miles per hour. Now, the electrical cost for all this and the cost of doing this, I don't know where that money's coming from. But, uh, you know, that went along with topics of cars that drive themselves and, and, uh, you know, you, you do your airline reservation on a, on a smartphone, get your Uber to come, get your, your train from Charlotte to Raleigh, catch a plane to Raleigh, and it tells you where to be and what to do. So it's, uh, a lot of people thinking far off into the future, so, but it was enjoyable seeing all of that and, and hearing the, the ideas that folks have. So, uh, very, this is the very first summit that DOT has had, and, uh, hopefully they'll continue to do that. Very beneficial. Huh? Yeah, there is a problem with, uh.
Stopping.
Yeah, acceleration and deceleration and G-forces. I will say, they do have a half-mile-long, um, test track. They got up to 312 miles per hour in half a mile, but they did not have to, since there were no passengers, they did not have to consider the G-force and start up and slow down. But they said they were all unlimited by the, the length of the, the tube, so. Okay, attorney's report?
Just one quick, Mayor, I'll be out of town tomorrow through Sunday, so I am available on my cellphone if anybody needs me.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Manager?
Uh, one quick thing, on February 20th, uh, the league is gonna have the town and state dinner. They're doing something different. This is in place of Town Hall Day. Lori sent out an email. Uh, one of the nice things is it would be dinner at 5:30 instead of like that nine o'clock or 8:30 dinner we used to have. Um, and then we are gonna work with our delegation to, uh, set times up to meet with them. If you're interested in going, let Lori know. I think the mayor's gonna reach out to, uh, Stallings, Indian Trail, and Min Hill to see, is there a possibility to do some kind of bigger delegation? And maybe very hard to logistically, because right now we meet out in hallways, which that would be, I don't know how you'd get over that, right? But, but the, the idea to pull the four towns together probably has merit. Demographically, we're very, very similar. And community, communities are similar in a lot of ways, too. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Query?
You are good doing us a full week of, uh, of days because our conference is two days after that or one day after that.
That's true. So you got Wednesday, you got a break on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. Yes.
We'll get paid big bucks for it.
That's why they retire.
Got a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're adjourned.